All right, we're going to reconvene. This is our 10:45 special meeting. Before we call on Mayor Kim, I actually wanted to ask Caillou Kimora to open the meeting for us. And by way of introduction, first, I wanted to thank the Emiloa staff for accommodating our board meeting here today and for welcoming us. I think it's a very fitting place to have a discussion on Mauna Kea. And you correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is the word "Emiloa" means the pursuit of new knowledge and one who explores, and is about venturing into the unknown, bringing back new knowledge, and sharing discoveries. I believe this is the mission to which Caillou, the executive director of Emiloa, has dedicated her life's work. In 2001, UH Hilo launched a formal planning process for what was called the Proposed Mauna Kea Astronomy Education Center. It was meant to be an effort to bring a conflicted community together on issues of science and culture, and address how and whether the world's premier telescopes could coexist with indigenous cultural practices on a site considered sacred. As an early and passionate proponent of this vision, the late Senator Inouye facilitated a $28 million grant from NASA to build a center that would bridge astronomy and culture in a way that was meant to inspire Hawaii's children grounded in their culture and seek out careers in science. This center opened in 2006, and Caillou was hired and was eventually promoted to become its executive director in 2010. In that capacity, she has led the center in building collaborations to advance research while promoting the application of indigenous worldviews to science teaching and learning. I'd like to introduce Caillou and ask her to open the meeting for us.
Mahalunui for the opportunity to host this meeting here today at Emiloa. You actually said a lot of things that I planned to say in my speech. Sorry. Yeah, the center opened exactly 12 years ago as a proud part of the University of Hawaii at Hilo. On behalf of our staff and volunteers, again, we're very excited to have you all here with us today. Hawaiians have always been scientists, eager to explore the natural world around us. It's innate to who we are. In Hawaiian, the word "Emiloa" defines this value of exploration. Our center was explicitly designed in order to integrate indigenous Hawaiian perspective and modern science through education delivered to both our local and global communities. We owe much of our vision, like you mentioned, to our founding supporter, Senator Daniel Inouye, and to the community at large. But Senator Inouye understood implicitly the need, and in his own words, to work together through open communication and where necessary compromise to allow for continued scientific exploration and discovery in a way, however, that inspires and engages Hawaii's youth. For those of you who may not have visited us before, we hope that we'll have the opportunity to walk you through our exhibit hall so that you can see for yourself how this has come to be. In 2001, I was hired, right, as a curriculum specialist at the very inception of the center, to assist the university in its attempt to bring about collaboration between the cultural and scientific communities of this island. But in all honesty, it was hardly a collaboration in those early years. It was a struggle. We endured great challenges as two distinct worldviews literally collided. In the beginning, Hawaiian values were relegated to being the pretty pictures on the wall and the leg reader at the door. And whereas nothing is wrong with those elements, our Hawaiian knowledge and values are way deeper than that. After five years of intense struggle, however, I am proud to say that we officially opened our doors on February 20, 2006, as the first museum anywhere in the world committed to presenting modern science within the framework and language of an indigenous culture. We had shifted from struggle to superficial collaboration to integration and even co-creation. A tangible evidence of this was the invention of 200 new Hawaiian words to explain modern astronomical discoveries. Even as recent as a few short months ago, Emiloa and Kahaka'ula Oke'eri' Koulani, both of UH Hilo, worked together to name a major discovery of both Haleakala and Mauna Kea, an object that entered our solar system from deep space, which is now recognized internationally as "O Muamua," a messenger or scout from the distant past. Imagine a time when all scientific discoveries made from this place might honor and continue Hawaii's legacy of exploration through the use of our language. Today, 12 years after opening and having served over 1 million people through interactive exhibits, planetarium productions, engaging educational programs, and both local and international partnerships, we see yet again challenges and divisiveness surrounding Mauna Kea. I know this divisiveness firsthand. I've lived through it through the creation of this center, and yet I've also seen and experienced the resolution and transformation that can emerge on the other side. I grew up on the slopes of Mauna Kea, so I have always understood the significance of Mauna Kea, kapiko, kaulana, o ka'aina, to the people, the culture, and the history of Hawaii. Mauna Kea is regarded as the umbilicus of the, or the piko of Wa Kea, the main progenitor of our islands, the core and the lifeline, connecting us to who we are as Hawaii and as a community. I am mindful that there are a wide range of deeply held beliefs and values and how best to steward these amazing qualities. But please know that Emiloa is here and ready to contribute all of our hard-earned experience to today's conversations around Mauna Kea and its future. We're here and ready to help our communities come yet again together. You know, I was reminded the other day by someone that played a very critical role in the creation of Emiloa that this center was intentionally placed at the piko or the center of this campus to serve as a connector between UH Hilo and the community. We consider ourselves one of the university's finest examples of public and private partnership. And even as we work tirelessly to grow the private funding, which we are privileged to receive from our community, I hope that we can continue to count on the university to leverage this investment with the critical core support that will allow us to amplify what we started and to continue to serve our community through these challenging times. Mahalunui Loa to each and every one of you for your leadership, your vision, and your role as stewards of our university. Aloha.
And we're going to welcome Mayor Kim by way of introduction. For those who don't know him, Harry Kim was born in Keahau. He graduated from Hilo High, and he attended UH Hilo. You may not know, he's a veteran. He served in the Army during the vet demo as a medic. He's a teacher. He taught at Poonaka'ah, intermediate in high school, Hilo High, and our very own Hawaii Community College. He was a coach, football, basketball, softball. And before he went to the dark side of politics, he was one of the best civil defense administrators in the world. He has been called on to provide advice and counsel as an international expert on disaster response systems, and has been called on to provide advice to other countries and to the UN. I have personally found him to be a very thoughtful, passionate, sincere, and ardent supporter for the people of his island and for the future of Hawaii. I thank him for taking the time to sit here patiently today and to attend our meeting and to share what I know are his very heartfelt views on Mauna Kea with the board.
First of all, before I start a business, I want to thank a person for the first time in public. About six years ago, my son was diagnosed with terminal cancer. You know how devastating that is? Looked for help, and because I heard he had terminal cancer, a very small chance of surviving it all, so I called him. And he was such a great big part of helping my son with contact with Stanford, the president of the cancer department. Son's well today, sassy as ever. Wayne, thank you. I was going to make a joke to start, but then again, you might think I'm not serious. And that joke was, I wore brand-new jeans to tell you how important this my presence was. The jeans part is not a joke. Thank you for this opportunity. This is the first public presentation of this mission. I'm way behind schedule. I was hoping to finish this by the 1st of January. Obviously, I did not. I can make all excuses in the world, but that's all it is. And I got to step up to the plate to finish this because of its importance. I'm glad I came early to hear of the University for Hawaii Indigenous Serving University. I don't use the word indigenous. I learned that from Canada. We say the people of the First Nation. Glad I came early to hear the vision of Mauna Loa, I mean Emiloa. And I thought, as that was being said, how ironic. Because what I thought was, I'd like Mauna Kea to be part of that vision, to share that vision and be a real close part of it. I'll read to you what I wrote, and in all seriousness, it's only a two-and-a-quarter page, double-spaced. It took me almost three months to finish it because of a constant change of words, because one word changed what I was sharing and bringing forth of what I felt, not just of me. If it's only yours, it's easy. But I thought that what I was saying here to present to you, a very important body that represented something of thousands and thousands of people, past and present, especially that of past and of present, those who are a little older than teenagers. When I read this mission for Hawaii just yesterday to a reporter from Honolulu, she asked me, "Well, how long did you have that vision and mission?" And I told her from the first time I was aware of how special this place of Hawaii was. So that was three, four years old when you start to be aware of those things. And I mean that in all sincerity, because it, and I need you to understand that, because it ties in to what I'm saying here. So I'll say it again. When did you begin to have this vision? From the very first time I realized the real specialness of this place we call home. Mission for Hawaii. This is not of Mauna Kea, this is the mission for Hawaii. If you ask any of my cabinet members on the first day of work, this is what is read to them of their job. The protection and preservation of the historical and cultural specialness of this land, the most precious and beautiful place on God's earth. Vision for Mauna Kea. Essential theme of Mauna Kea should be of the native Hawaiians' exploration of the ocean to the discoveries of the universe. Hawaiians understood how the world was connected from the mountain to the sea. They explored the ocean and learned about the heavens to guide them. They believe that this majestic mountain is the earth's connecting point to the rest of the universe. This is about the mountain being part of their soul. I first said that publicly in 1981 to the University for Hawaii when they asked me in civil defense of knowing about the mountain. And it was in Emiloa someplace it was told, that quote, "In 1981." It was then I said, can I deviate from my job of civil defense because I was finished talking to them about acclimation, blizzards, and dust, et cetera? I said, because they were all scientists, in your quest of knowledge for the use of Mauna Kea, you look at Mauna Kea as pristine for that of science. But in doing so, please be aware that there are others that look at Mauna Kea not of science, but as part of their soul. And if you are going to trap on someone's soul, please do it with care, with caution, and above all, compassion. I hate to say it, but I'm afraid we did not do that. I don't mean now, but initially, and for many years thereafter. Mauna Kea to be a symbol of nations working together for the pursuit of peace and harmony, a beacon of hope and discovery for the world. This is not just about science. This is about combining culture and science. It is about respect and caring. This is about the mountain bringing people together. Kimora and I were just talking back there. In our times of growing up, culture, people, development, those words weren't even in the vocabulary. Mauna Kea to be a quest for knowledge to make us better people and better stewards of this world. Mauna Kea to be a symbol of native Hawaiian heritage and the inseparability of nature and culture. Mauna Kea to be recognized as one of the world's natural and cultural treasures. Mauna Kea to be a recognition of a harmony that grew out of a painful history of intrusions upon the First Nation of Hawaii, that today finds a diverse, respectful community remarkable to the world, the cosmopolitan people, people of the world. For those of you who are near my age and above 50, you understand what I just said. For those of you who are new to the island and the state, whether by birth or by migration in, it's just a word. The word cosmopolitan was a very, very special word only for the place of Hawaii, of the people. I think it's very symbolic of how we forgot who we are, how very special this place is of people and of land, how we not only forgot, but we disrespected and disregarded that one simple word, cosmopolitan, people of the world. And I think for the most part, may have been the biggest cause of where we are today. We forgot how special this place is. We forgot how special the Hawaiian people and their heritage is. It was so wisely said once, quote, "The world will turn to Hawaii as a search for world peace because Hawaii has the key, aloha," and of quote, "anti pilahi paki." Mauna Kea to be a model of science and of culture, past and present, going forward. Mauna Kea to be an opportunity for Hawaii to be the center of discovery of the universe. Mauna Kea to be a model of how the people of the world can live together in harmony. How do we do this? This vision is to begin by convening a core group representing different interests and expertise to provide direction and guidance to achieve this. I thought it was through, back in December, the selection of this group, but just this morning, believe it or not, because I believe in a message from the heavens, that I needed to add one more person. So I just talked to him this morning, and I will meet with him shortly. What are those initiatives? To review and reorganize the management authority to implement the vision. You know, that one sentence sure shook up a lot of people. By that, I mean a misinterpretation of what I meant. And I think all of you who are involved in management know that regardless of what you're going to do, if you are going to try to change something, you don't just change it from the outside in. You have to go in and review the whole picture before you change one solitary thing. And that's all that statement said. Review and reorganize the management authority to implement the vision. But there was one thing I felt needed to be changed to some degree or total degree that the management must have and should have more local authority. Bullet number two, establish Mauna Kea as a national and international monument of global significance. Those are not words. There's a true meaning of what Hawaii is and can be and should be. And in the development in the past hundred years, especially the year between 1900 and 2000, I think we forgot that. The focus was on money, of science, and forgot the word "culture" and "heritage." It was just a time. It's nobody's fault. It was just a time. Create educational programs that feature the special characteristics of Mauna Kea in astronomy, geology, and biology. Initially, I wrote that sentence, and it ended there. And this past Christmas, my son from the mainland and his son, my grandson, only one, and my son and granddaughter here, and my daughter-in-law. I told them if they wanted to go up and share something so very special of Mauna Kea, the slopes of the ne'ne bird, and to go up and watch the stars. And they went. And the next day, I talked to them. I asked my daughter-in-law, who is a good part of Hawaii, and my son, who is no part of Hawaii. And she said, you know, I've been in school here in Hawaii since K to 12. And not one time in those 12 years did one teacher, one class, one focus of anything of learning, of the specialness of being Hawaiian. And you need to drink that in a bit of what we did. And so they started to ramble about how beautiful that mountain could be to help that, to make them feel better as who they are, because we sure did a damn good job of making them not feel good about who they are. And I added this after I talked to them, because boy, did they have visions as well as my other son. Create educational programs that combine science and culture for na'keke and akapuna, not just for learning, but for the sheer joy of an excitement of discovery. Create a cultural center. Next draft, not enough. What did I do? I add one word. Create a major cultural center and gather in place that will acknowledge the history and contribution of native Hawaiians, to make them feel just a little better of who they are and what they mean to us in the world. Participate in national and international efforts to integrate culture and nature and heritage protection and interpretation. Hawaii can take the lead in this movement. I've already talked to the Secretary General of the UN, and he believes this is so right. I've talked to people of China, and they so believe this is needed. I talked to the people of Japan, and their memory said, because I had this place of hope, harmony, peace on earth. And we all know what we did to Japan, and it's ironic, my past couple of meetings have been of preparation of war. Boy, if ever the world needs us, if ever we needed, what Hawaiians stand for. And that's why there's so many drafts, because as you're writing and reading to yourself in the quiet of the morning, these things come forth, so you change again. I really believe of every word I've said to you. I don't want anyone in this room, back or forth, to misinterpret anything I say. It is so easy for us to be critical. But as I was saying to Kimora, it wasn't that long ago that to speak Hawaiian was a rarity to be heard. It wasn't that long ago that common knowledge was you do not speak Hawaiian outside of your house. And I'm so proud of you, the University for Hawaii, for what you have done in the past 20 years or less, of your master's program on the Hawaiian language, probably the first in the nation. I'm so proud of the University of Hawaii in regards to the Hawaiian program, the Department of Education, and the language that today they measure in the thousands. It wasn't that long ago it was measured below 100. I just want you to know that I do balance and look at things in perspective. What we did wrong, and that's why I stated in there, we did wrong. There's no harm or finger pointing to say we did wrong because our daddy's of absolute. I'm proud of the charter school in Waimea. I picked one of the people on the board because there is heavy involvement in the charter school of Hawaiian. And I picked others because of what they have shown of their life and what they believe, not because of their position or non-position of Mauna Kea, the scope. I have talked to OHA. I've talked to Kamehameha. Talked to Leo Kalani. I talked to some protectors, not enough, and I hope to talk to much more. I've talked to community groups and individuals on this, as I've written it, because I need to feel from them. I truly believe of everything I wrote to you, as I said, I believe we are in a threshold of major changes that began maybe 10, 15 years ago. As my Hawaiian brothers know, you think we'd have a meeting and we'd put it at the chart there, for the culture of the Hawaiians. We did wrong, and you have done a lot to correct that wrong. I believe Mauna Kea can be such a good thing of that, of science and of culture. I want to read this sentence to you and ask you to try to understand it, word for word. This is about the mountain being part of their soul. I grew up like both of you, that we look at land differently, just a place to live, work, cultivate, make money, et cetera, et cetera. I believe that if this regards to of Mauna Kea, being part of person-soul, we recognize of our connection to the most important element of our home that represents the culture of And I truly believe that the protectors are not our enemies. The protectors are our friends. All the protectors did is bring out the frustration of what we should have done or should have known. And I'm not putting the fingers at you, I'm putting the fingers at us. I'm saying truthfully, us, of not listening, of looking at them as a burden or obstruction as to what we want to achieve. And all they were saying, what about the culture? I look at a place called Koona'iki in Kona, for those of you who know Koona'iki, where I started to learn very heavily about what we did and did not do, and talked to the president and CEO. And maybe 16 years ago, said the dream of 17 miles of coastline in Kona that will forever be protected from resorts, but the back of the coastline will not, and the front will be of the heritage of a very sacred place of family, surfing, fishing, et cetera. Look at Koona'iki. I considered that the template. I asked the gentleman to help me establish Koona'iki as a template of what can be done of working together. I believe it is the best template in the world, bar none. If you have time, please go look at it. The whole coastline was given to the people of Hawaii. The whole coastline, he built the road, the showers, the toilets, and camping areas as he developed in the back that the community approved on. as he developed in the back that the community approved on. Of a recognition, the pine trees is a special place of family. I believe Mauna Kea can be that. A recognition of where we went wrong and recognition where we go forward, of science and culture. Please don't look at the protectors as a burden or especially our enemy. They're not. They're just bringing out the frustration of what happened to them. I do believe that we are in a very beautiful threshold, just for the examples I gave you, what the university have done. Just for the fact that you allowed me to speak. Thank you very much.
To testify is Corey Harden. And just a reminder, there's a three-minute limit. There'll be a buzzer at two or a bell at two minutes.
Okay. Good morning. Thank you for coming to Hilo. I'm commenting on the audit. And I am very concerned that there have been severe impacts to Mauna Kea from past management. And also more concerned that information on many expenditures and funding sources still remains hidden. And so I don't think we need the type of audit that is proposed today. Instead, we need a forensic financial audit, which would go much further to examine possible financial misconduct. And I think the audit should not be done by the UH Office of Internal Audit. As proposed today, but instead should be done by the State Office of Auditor for a more objective view. And may it remain with the entities that should be covered, UH system, Institute of Astronomy, so forth. And issues that should be covered by the audit, the personal and financial costs of injuries and deaths on Mauna Kea, the lost natural and cultural resources, poverty damage from the new observatories. The audit should cover lost opportunities from not charging fair market rent, not allowing non-astronomy activities that could have generated revenue, lost opportunities from not collecting fees on patents, and not depositing revenue from all these into the state general fund. The audit should cover resources used for the litigation for the KEK outrigger, the comprehensive management plan, the thirty-meter telescope, and the general lease extension. Should cover resources used for sublease solicitation and negotiation, and personnel and contractor costs. The audit should cover contracts and professional services used to write, implement, and evaluate the comprehensive management plan and for environmental impact studies since 2010. The audit should cover expenditures and funding sources for UH activities on Mauna Kea. The audit should cover any calculation by UH on the cost of implementing the comprehensive management plan and funding sources. The audit should cover any fees UH has sought from lessees and permit holders to implement the comprehensive plan. And the audit should cover the negotiation process for subleases and permits, because this should be a fair process that allows public input. So thank you for coming at Hilo again and for considering my comments.
The next testifier is Richard Ha. Richard Ha.
Aloha, Boyd. I'm, I would like to say I'm a strong supporter of UH. I flunked out of school in nineteen sixty-five, but in two thousand eight, I got a Shiger College Hall of Honor. And I got a distinguished alumni award in two thousand eleven. Who would have thought? But I really appreciate the opportunity. I mean, nobody in my family ever went to college, you know? So, but I'm, I just wanted to say something. I am a Pueo board member, but I'm testifying as an individual. And I also want to say that I attended three of the Aha. I started in the morning to the end, three days. I testified before you folks in support of the MOU. The first observation I'd like to make is that the observatories are like little temples. Where is the Hawaiian temple? No more. And in my opinion, this is the reason why we have SB thirty ninety. And here's what I'd like to say. The main problem is that UH does not control lands. How I should say it is this. You know the small piece of land at Halepohaku, where the Mauna Kea Support Services is located? It's such a small place, and they've got such a serious mission, which they're doing a good job of. It's just that they're asked to do something they cannot do. Because after the Saddle Road got built, what, we got three hundred visitors a night up there now? They had to cut back on stargazing. I mean, stargazing, stargazing is really good for our people and kids and everything. But they had to cut back. Why? Safety. And why? Because you cannot, they cannot do the mission they're supposed to do. And you know why you got SB thirty ninety? Basically, SB thirty ninety gives control of the land, so UH can make the decision to separate the two missions. The first mission is the Support Services mission, which is being done well now. The other mission is respect for the culture and education. And that's what's missing. So that's why, you know, we support, or I support, and Pueo does too, a cultural center above the clouds, just like the mayor said. So basically, that's, oh man, I got a whole bunch more things to say, but you get the drift, yeah? So the cure can be worse than the disease. We got to figure out a way so UH has a way to make the decision to split it up. Once you do that, you know, the benefits of the cultural center is we split it up, number one. Yeah, I know. I'm sorry. But this is really important, because Pueo was the only native Hawaiian group that testified at the contested case hearing. And you know why we did that? Not because we wanted to, because we had to. Nobody else would step up, then what? So I just want to, and this pretty should be obvious to all of you folks. The Support Services cannot fulfill the mission. Too small. The Culture Center can fulfill the mayor's vision of a peace park. When we start exploring outer space, Hawaiians should be in the discussion. We will not be there if we're only below the clouds, because above the clouds is when you're a citizen of the world. And you know, right here in Imaula, we have Kalepa, yeah? He's, everybody knows Kalepa. He's an explorer. Hawaiians were known to be explorers. We should be able to be explorers when we start to go into outer space. But the most important thing is this, we do something like that. What we'll do is support what Hawaiians were known for, sustainability and aloha. You know, this is the kind of stuff that we need to take with us when we go into outer space. But you know what? The most important thing is it establishes the moral authority. Aloha is the moral authority when we're up on Mauna Kea. So we got to figure out a solution, because SB thirty ninety is kind of a hard solution to the problem. Thank you.
Aloha, Kako. So since it's three minutes, we get straight to the point. So forensic audit should be, should be taking part from a private, not in-house matter, because there are criminal liabilities that did take place, yeah? So the bulldozing of our Aha, Ua Koko, that was put up by our community, that was mismanaged by OMKM, yeah? That's a big issue. You guys just come up, you guys just infringe. And to make everything more clear, that's Hawaiian national lands. That's our Hawaiian national monument. I'm a Hawaiian national. So that's where we can start off with. This is not America, yeah? So when you guys come and make profit, and you guys extort our culture, you guys arrest our people, and you guys do this repeatedly, and our olelo is under attack, yeah? We have nowhere to go. We have nowhere to go but stay home, yeah? Mauna Kea is our mama, yeah? That's not for profit. That's not a playpark, yeah? That's for respect. And that's what I feel like you guys are missing, yeah? Aloha, respect. And so that compelled me to come to there. And I also wanted to ask the board from Hanabusa, who in the university system vouched for that building, Kaka'ula to come up, or Imaula, or all of these things? Who signed that contract, yeah? Because you guys are naming people within the community, yeah? But you guys are not naming them. And so for me, I kind of take that. We need more answers. We need more answers to why did Hanabusa ask? Who rubber stamped the TMT clause kids up there, yeah? And that just makes us weak when we see all these things. And a dollar a year, we cannot even get our homesteaders. I'm part of the Beneficiary Trust Council, Moko Okeave. We cannot even get our families on the land for a dollar. And this, and this been going on for how many years? A dollar a year? We are the highest incarcerated, highest with no education, homelessness. Everything is against us, yeah? How are you guys giving out dollar years, uh, dollar leases? It's like a dollar mania fee over here. I got a couple dollars, yeah? We want a dollar a year lease too, yeah? But not at Mauna Kea. That's for sure. That's not going to happen, yeah? No more. And just like our commissioner said, all leases is canceled up Mauna Kea, yeah? This is on behalf of the Beneficiary Trust Council and the beneficiaries, yeah? The waitlisters and those who are waiting. And so we do not approve any of these things, especially if we don't have anything to even live under, yeah? And so Public Law one oh three dash fifty talks about reconciliation, yeah? Nineteen ninety-three, we have a pastor in here that was a part of it, the United Church of Christ that's here, to oversee these conversations, yeah? And they're taking notes to go back up to talk about these things. And one of them is the reconciliation. This is not, this is not ceded lands. This is seized lands. Let's not fool ourselves over here, yeah? We're not fooling nobody around here. We're not an Indian tribe, because we have no, it's not, no disrespect to anybody. You guys are wanting to push for this federal recognition, a nation within the nation, that's not happening. That is not happening, and it will not happen. And so this, this envision that I hear everybody talking about vision, yeah? This is our kuleana. This is not a vision, yeah? Everybody's talking about vision, metropolitan, yeah? Everybody want to add in something. But what about the host? What about our queen, who got held at gunpoint? What about our kikis? What about our kupuna? And that's what I'm here for. I'm here to speak on behalf of those who can't make it and don't want to show up anyways, because they're going to be profiled, yeah? So now I'm here speaking on behalf of our families, who chose not to come today for their safety, yeah? And those thirty-one that got arrested without even TMT having a permit, something had to be violated over there, but it had to be the native Hawaiian or the kanakamali, right? It could not have been the process. The process could not have been wrong. It has to be the host culture who's always wrong, and that we cannot stand for. We will not stand for that, yeah? And I cannot stand when people say, make these centers to make our culture center to make me feel better about myself, yeah? Or the community to feel better, yeah? We need respect. We need aloha. We need reconciliation, yeah? That's where we can start. We can start from those points, yeah? So as a University of Hawaii at Hilo national student, we also have been working with David Lasner and the rest of the families out here, the institution. We have a Hawaiian Kingdom Declaration form, yeah? Some would want to say that this is a religious affiliation. Some people would want to call it what it is, an alternative citizenship, right? Board, I'm pretty sure you guys know about this. So my thing is, we need to bring clarity to this, because we know this is not ceded land. We know this is seized land. So let's move forward and honor this kind of things, yeah? I feel like this is a great start. But if you guys are not going to honor these kind of things, these declarations, and see that we are the original, yeah? Not native Hawaiians, yeah? We are the original people of these islands, this kingdom, Ko'avaipaiaina. And we need to just bring more clarity to these issues, because we see this going. You guys are all handpicked by the governor down, right? There is none of our public family members or community members on this board, which I believe would have a bigger impact, because now we're just faced with standards. You guys have your guys' policies that you guys want to conduct and continue. And I wanted to leave it off with that, that all councils on Mauna Kea and all leases on Mauna Kea is canceled, yeah? No more dollar a years, no more any other deals, yeah? Reconciliation should be set on the table through our educational foundation, yeah? Not over people getting arrested or people getting persecuted for olelo hawai'i. This day must cease today, and we will look forward to seeing you guys on different meetings if we have to. But if not, we just want you guys to keep in mind that Public Law one oh three dash fifty recognizes us as the nationals, yeah? So you guys need to find out a way to get the nationals to the table so we can have an equal dialogue and not be muted. Mahalo, everybody, for your time and effort. And Mauna Kea is our pu'u hunua. That's not our park. Mahalo.
Aloha, Mai Kako. Aloha to the border regions here and to all the people in the audience here. All of us here for Mauna Kea and for the serious business and issue that starts at the top of our mountain. My name is Nahalelaunaliika Paole. This is my daughter, Kahoe Iwai, Kahoe Pokani. I go by Lakia Tras. And I wanted to bring her here as much as she thinks this is a playground. Yeah, this is, this is her kuleana. This mauna is her kuleana. She is an heir of the Hawaiian kingdom. She is a heir. She is an Aboriginal Hawaiian who traces her lineage to Na Alii, yeah? So the crowning government lands on Mauna Kea, yeah, these are your heirs, the kanakamali, the Aboriginal Hawaiian people. How many, how many facilities up there do we have? Twenty-two installations, right? Thirteen telescopes, none of which have time for her. Yeah, none of which have time for her, none of which belong to her, yeah? And so we need to change that, just like Brother Kepa was saying. We're Hawaiian nationals. We're not Americans. That needs to be acknowledged. That needs to be recognized. Because the kuleana of the mountain belongs to all of us. Doesn't start at the top, starts at the bottom. And we have to malama, starting from the bottom, not starting at the top where nobody can have any say or any power, other than the select few, yeah? So this is her reaching for that power. This is her reaching for that opportunity to be educated in her country of origin, to not be discriminated against, yeah? And to have her sacred places protected. That's why we're here. That's why we're here, to protect our sacred places. I know there's bills in the ledge right now that seek to do what you guys are discussing today, a forensic audit, a new management board. It might turn a lot of this into, you know, more wheels spinning, yeah? But it needs to be heard. It needs to be recognized. The Hawaiian people are still here. The kanakamali are still here. Our sacred places are still sacred, and we will fight to protect that with aloha, through alohaaina. Mahalo, aloha. Say aloha.
Hello. Hannah from the Graduate Student Organization. So first, I'd like to apologize to the board for my late testimony. I'd also like to reiterate that in my capacity as a representative of the GSO, I stand by our written testimony and our resolution from August two thousand and seventeen. On a slightly less formal note, I'd like to add that I've had the opportunity to talk story with constituents about this issue, and I have to say, it's not as binary for us graduate students as some people might think. After all, Mauna Kea is a highly complex issue. For the graduate students who I've informally talked to, stances vary and exist on a continuum. Certainly, there are graduate students who take a hard line on both ends of this spectrum, but there are plenty of students with perspectives in between who understand and are talking about the complexities of the issue. And if I can take a moment to take off my GSO hat and speak as an individual, as a women's studies scholar and sociology scholar, as a Women's Studies scholar and sociology scholar, um, and talk a little bit about my positionality. I'm white. I'm from the mainland, um, and I have called Hawaii home for the past three and a half years. Um, I understand that I'm a settler in a settler colonial state. And, um, me as an individual, I personally stand with Kanakamali on this issue because I think that that is my duty as a white ally, as an active white ally, to inform myself on this issue and to stand in solidarity with that movement. So again, that's me as an individual. I just wanna make that clear. Thank you.
Aloha. First retired ranger of Mauna Kea. I helped create the stewardship program of Mauna Kea. After I retired in 2008, I had talked to the management and Stephanie Nagara concerning many more development on the mountain. The area known as Thirteen North is where this gigantic, um, telescope is to be built. So I warned Stephanie and told her she have to pass through a scrutiny test to get permission to develop in that area. And of course, you all know today, it's still in the Supreme Court. I myself, as the pure-blooded Hawaiian, I'm a high chief. I sit on pu'u kala'oa with the ruling chiefs of all of Hawaii Native. I'm also a senior kupuna to the Hokulea. I've been involved with many issues concerning Hawaii to include the overthrow. I was part of the overthrow in 1993, introducing the apology bill that Bill Clinton signed and the proclamation that was read about Hawaii Native. I'm a Purple Heart winner, two medals of award from the United States Army, retired today. I served my country and I served Hawaii, and I'm still doing that today. I'm a member of the Kingdom of Hawaii. And also, I'm affiliated to the latest king, King Kalakaua, and his order. I represent many people all around the world, to include the South Pacific. I'm also known in the South Pacific as Tamanu Ritanu, first nation that settled these islands from the Ma'keises. When I first got on board to work for, uh, Office of Mauna Kea Management, I was asked because of an incident that took place on the mountain. My person name is Ron Kona. He called me for coffee, said that they had a problem on Mauna Kea. And some of our people was up there and they didn't know how to handle these Kanakamalos that were on the mountain. So I tell him, "Well, maybe I can help resolve this problem and bring at least, uh, something to the table that might help the university understand that the, uh, mountain needs to be, uh, be aware not only of its sacredness, but the permission granted to be able to go up onto that high mountain." And by the way, Mauna Kea is a registered sacred mountain. It's not something we lay out. The other thing is, of course, we got one of the highest and best places for observatories because we have all of the northern hemisphere and part of the southern hemisphere to do navigational work in the stars. The first era early navigators that migrated from the south utilized their stars and navigated the ocean to come all the way up here on north and become the first nation to saddle these islands. My family settled on the island of Maui in 427 AD. Piana Kalani, on the island of Maui, with Piilani and many of the ruling chiefs that were here prior to the birth of Kamehameha Great. My main family is Kawawa Nui Amahi, great-grandfather to Kamehameha Great. In their century, while I was growing up and even before, Hawaiians struggled to be their identity back till today. Myself, as an educated Hawaiian today and a person of my interest to this mountain, is that we need to have better stewardship. We need to have the culture involved so that everybody can understand how to respect each other and understand there are searching protocols that need to be established, which I helped with the Office of Mauna Kea Management when I got on board in the year 2000. We created the Ranger Program. I created the Ranger Program. I helped kick off the stewardship program sanctioned by a retired judge, um, that put me on board. So the whole idea of just adding more people onto the program is a needed and a must. And it's you, the board of directors, to bring our new work and new, uh, energy to support Mauna Kea by bringing awareness to the culture. So those people that are gonna come on board that I see today, that I had put in to become part of the advisory group to the management plan, it's something that was needed to be done and it was past due. I myself, I keep track of everything that goes on, not only here in Hawaii, but around the world with science and astronomy. I still live by the motto of the late king David la... Kala'oa. And that is to embrace the sacred temple of science and education. We cannot just keep on fighting each other. We've done that in the old days, and we never got nowhere. We lost a lot of people because of that. Disagreements between family and feud. We're not there anymore. We're moving forward in the 21st century. We need to get on board and get the job done and do a better job than what it is today. So mahalo for you people to come here and share your mana'o and taking testimonies that is so important to our people of today and for our future generations, yet to come. Education is a must. Citizenship is a must. Everything that we talk and try and dream about is a must. We take risks every day of our lives and repay every day as soon as you get up in the morning and see first light. Today, the world is crazy. You know it, and it's out there. We need to come together and stop all this ha-ha-ha disagreements. Get to the table, sit down, negotiate, and make sense of all of this. With that, I would like to say good luck in all of your choices and good luck to all of you people for making major decision-making, even if you're coming to keeping a good record in financial affairs and auditing the university. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else here who has not signed up who wishes to talk?
Have a nice day.
Yeah.
Um, I simply have a message to relay to you that I've had the honor and multiple opportunities. Oh, sorry. Sorry. Doug Simons, the Director of Canada, Francois Telescope. I've had the honor and many opportunities to talk to the mayor privately about his vision, watched it evolve in his early days since the election process about a year and a half ago into the eloquent form that you heard of here today. Uh, and my message to you is that I'm a full supporter of the mayor's vision. It is a beautiful vision. He's passionate about it. Um, he's really doing all that he can to try and bring people on board. It's inclusive. It's one that I think a lot of people can rally around. And I just wanted to make sure you heard that and Mayor Kim hears that in front of everybody today, that I'm record for supporting the mayor's vision. Mahalo.
This request is primarily a housekeeping matter to bring current members up to date. The members are, uh, for your consideration, Mr. Harry Kalua, Mr. Greg Morris, and Mr. Greg Chung. Uh, future requests will come forth no later than June of this year to appoint new members to become effective July 1. If not, all those in favor say aye. All opposed? Thank you. Motion's approved. And thank you all for your service on the board. We want our second item, which is a resolution requesting financial management audit of Mauna Kea activities.
The board is taking up for its consideration a resolution to, uh, request in conjunction with the administration that the Office of the Internal Auditor conduct a financial management audit of the Mauna Kea operations and the various entities that are involved. Um, we think that the time is appropriate for us to proactively look at this in light of the public concerns, uh, that have hovered over this controversy over the last two years or so, uh, that we have a financial audit. Now, the difference between, uh, the forensic audit, which is more in audit geared toward looking at misappropriation of funds or fraud, has been requested and is part of a, um, a bill that I think Calvert will probably talk about to ask the state auditor to do a forensic audit of the Mauna Kea operations. Uh, in order not to duplicate that effort, um, we are requesting a financial management audit, which is not the same as a forensic audit. So it's a little different. And, uh, hopefully, the audit will yield recommendations and issues and problems and weaknesses of our system that we can improve upon in terms of better, uh, serving the mountain and, uh, its constituents. And so with that, um, you know, we have drafted a resolution to accomplish that objective.
We've heard testimony today with regard to the state auditor conducting what amounts to a fraud investigation and allegation of maybe criminal activities on the mountain. Uh, we are not suggesting that kind of an audit. That is the purview of a certified fraud auditor, um, and that's a very special kind of audit, just reinforcing what Regent Kudo said. We are not, our audit is not designed to uncover fraud. But in any audit, if fraud is uncovered, it is certainly noted, but it's not the objective. I've read through the written testimony that was provided with regard to the recommendation for the state, and it involves economic analysis, not financial audit analysis. Uh, lost opportunity costs, the cost of doing or not doing something. These are not the purview of an auditor, and they wouldn't actually be the purview of a state auditor. It would be the purview of a fraud auditor and an economic analysis by an economist. So I just want the board to understand these are two completely different things.
In the paper this morning, I thought we already did this. But most of us didn't even know about it until forty-eight hours ago. Um, I think it's a good idea. I'm not sure whether in fact it's a reaction to the bill, but I do have concerns about internal audit. I think there's already sufficient public suspicion about Mauna Kea, about the university's role in Mauna Kea. And my fear is that those who have a pre-belief that the university has mismanaged Mauna Kea, and I'm not saying that I know all the facts and not suggesting that's occurred, will, I think, discount any audit that is done internally. And that is completely understandable. So I don't know the drafters of this, what their motivation was, but, and unlike my fellow regent, Mr. McInerney, who's a CPA, a defrocked attorney, I would, I would much prefer that this audit be conducted completely independently of the university by a entity that is not associated with the university so that whatever results are obtained cannot be challenged on the basis that it is an internal investigation so that those who may not appreciate the findings, whatever they may be, will not be able to challenge it on the basis of bias. And so I just raise that as a concern.
In response to Regent Portnoy's concerns, I think, uh, I was very conscious of that particular element. Uh, number one is, um, uh, the, 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 the thinking was that the Internal Audit Office would be, uh, using an external auditor because of their lack of ability to conduct this type of audit. You need a specialized skill set to do that. So we would probably contract out with a third party. In addition, the, uh, we would expect that our independent audit committee would be overseeing, uh, the progress of this particular work as it moves along to fruition and assure all of the people who are stakeholders that this is purely being done for, um, uh, our improvement. Uh, and so we don't wanna color anything that's coming out of this thing. We want it to be frank and honest so that we can act on, um, any kind of improvements that are necessary if called for to how we manage the mountain and do a better job of what we're doing.
Is there a desire to add that clarification to the language? The language right now says that the University of Hawaii Office of Internal Audit perform a financial management audit?
I've heard Ben suggesting that the intent is to have the internal auditor pass the ball off to an external, uh, company. At a minimum, I would ask that that be included as a requirement in this resolution.
I have no problems with that.
My concern with adding that as specific language, it then reads like it will be a requirement which will result in requests for proposals. And I think it may delay the start of the audit, which is not to suggest that we won't end up there. It's just to suggest that if we start out with this wording, I would be concerned that before we can even actually begin to start the audit process, we'd have to go through the process of a request for proposal. And in order to do the request for proposal, we have to preliminarily do the internal audit. So it seems like we've got a chicken and an egg issue here. I would much prefer this to be an understanding and even to report back to the board or the Independent Audit Committee of the progress we're making. And with the understanding that, the intention is to have an outside auditor, and if we come back to the board and we don't have it, that would be the time for Regent Portnoy's suggestion to be advanced.
The Independent Audit Committee has the authority, without further approval from the board, to engage outside accountants and other experts where we think it's appropriate that the in-house capability doesn't exist. So I would...
So I would agree with Regent McInerney that we don't need to put it in the reso itself to do it, and I concur with his observations, that it will slow the process down, that we need to start. And once we get as far as we can internally, we determine that we cannot complete it satisfactorily without outside assistance. We have the ability to do that without coming back to the Board for further approval. So I would recommend that the resolution as it stands gives us the authority that we need to get the outside help, if and when we determine that we need it.
I'd like the record to reflect that I'm not agreeing with Regent Portnoy, first of all. But I think that in the absence of the forensic audit that is being proposed, I have concerns about any kind of audit that would have any ties to the university, because if we understand...
Sounds like an agreement.
If we understand that anything that would be internal to the university would be dismissed by most people, I think it would be a waste of time and energy and money.
This is one of those times when I actually believe that our internal auditor has the capability to help the administration understand the complex finances. So I am not expecting that, I'm not aware of any criminal activity or fraud, but the actual finances of this enterprise are quite complicated. There's a mix of activity involving the University of Hawaii, primarily through the Office of Mauna Kea Management, with multiple sources of funding of necessity that flow to that organization and are expended that through that organization. There are multiple sources of funding that come into the Mauna Kea Support Services, which is largely financed through the Research Corporation of the University of Hawaii. I will say that both of those organizations are audited externally on an annual basis, and they're part of the annual financial statements that the Board of Regents approves. What I think our internal auditor can help the administration understand is the complexity of the flows into and out of both organizations, and the transfers between them, which have developed over more than a decade, and I think that will help give us some understanding of how we might improve our operations and make them more efficient. So from my perspective... This is actually not about the fact that there are individuals in the community who distrust everything that the university does and allege fraud, and it's not about a bill that was introduced as a punitive measure against the university. It's actually about helping us understand what we're doing and how we can do better.
My only thought is that if that is what the realized purpose is, then I'm okay with it. But if the realized purpose is that this will allow others to believe that the information is going to be unbiased, then I think that's my only comment.
Just as a reminder to clarify, this is a board resolution. This is not an administrative resolution, so it's a board-introduced resolution.
Right.
Yeah, I would not have any problem with the administration asking the internal auditor for advising to consult with the internal auditor, but I don't think you need a resolution for that. Because I think the President can simply request the internal auditor to do that or to perform that function, if we're thinking primarily in terms of self-improvement. But this resolution isn't aimed at that, because it specifically talks about concerns raised by the public, and obviously, well, I think obviously, in its tone, it is trying to address widespread concern. Now, I'm not talking about the legitimacy of that concern or anything like that, but the resolution seems to be aimed at trying to address those concerns. And so if, and it speaks again about these public concerns being objectively studied and properly addressed. So if we're talking about an objective evaluation, then, you know, normally you would not retain someone internally, because that would always carry the, I guess, the impression that there may be potential influence with respect to any internal audit. Even if, I think retaining an external auditor always runs the risk that, well, that we're paying the auditor, and the auditor, external auditor would obviously still be in consultation with the administration. So I think the only really truly objective study would have to be done by someone not connected with the university. And I don't necessarily think that a third-party external auditor would be the answer. I know there are several, a couple of pending bills before the legislature asking that the state auditor perform that function. Now, we don't have control over the legislature, and we don't know what the end result would be in terms of these bills, but the state auditor, not himself personally, but at least that office, has had a continuing history of auditing the university in terms of Mauna Kea. So it has at least experience and background in terms of its staffing, and I would much prefer that if there were an external audit, that it would be through an auditor that's appointed by and hired by and supervised by the legislature. So that would be my preference, although, as I said, the contingency is whether or not the legislature would end up appointing someone. In the meantime, as I said, I don't see any problem with the President taking the initiative and getting the Internal Audit Office to perform that, because I don't think that would necessarily be a duplication of what the state auditor would do. And if the university administration does have its own audit, that might be helpful in terms of comparison, if there were another audit done.
It's my understanding that the internal auditor reports directly to the Board, so I don't believe... No?
The internal auditor reports to the Independent Audit Committee.
Oh, okay.
Technically, yeah.
Which is a committee of the Board.
A committee of the Board, correct.
Okay. The internal auditor reports to the audit committee of the Board. So the audit committee of the Board directs the work of the internal auditor. The President cannot direct the internal auditor to make the study that we have been talking about. Is that correct?
Actually, I was going to be, a clarification I was going to make. The Independent Audit Committee advises and directs the independent, or the internal auditor, as to what work is done. And at our, regardless of how this resolution ends up, we are going to be asking the internal auditor to make a presentation of an audit program for the Mauna Kea situation, which will probably follow very close to the resolution. The only reason I would like the resolution is it gives a little more push to actually get this done. Otherwise, we're simply going to be requesting from Glenn that he make a presentation of an amendment to his internal audit procedures to add this to the procedures he's going to do. And we want to get it started, that that process started, because it takes a while to plan out that internal audit, regardless of which way we go on it, and to get it implemented. And this would actually be a procedure that would come in the next fiscal year.
So as I understand that you, as Chair of the Audit Committee, feels that this resolution is helpful to us at this time?
I didn't quite hear you.
As Chair of the Audit Committee, you feel that this resolution is helpful...
Yes.
...to your committee at this time?
Yes, and I have seen it, and I support it.
In this form?
Yes, I've seen it and I support it.
I appreciate that. Regent Higaki?
And I apologize. I just, maybe I'm just looking at this too simplistically, but if it is the desire to understand the complexity of the way that Mauna Kea is managed, to me, maybe it's semantics, but this reads to me like it's going to be some kind of audit to discover what audits do. And what, I thank the President for explaining and saying what he just did. And if that's the goal and the desire, it seems to me that it would be an easier read so that the expectation is fully understood, that it say something like that the university, as I mentioned, would want to understand the complexities of the management of Mauna Kea, as opposed to the word audit.
By way of background, the independent, and I quote the word, independent audit committee was formed on the, as a reaction by the legislature to the public concerns of the Board of Regents following the Stevie Wonder fiasco. It was created to do independent investigation and recommendations with regard to our functioning as a Board of Regents in terms of financial management. And it is the only committee, which is very different from the other committees that we have, because the chairman is selected by a different process than appointment by the Chair of our Board. It is the Chair of that particular Board Subcommittee is elected by all of the members of the Board of Regents. So it was designed specifically to be as independent as it could be within our Board, and assigned to that is the Internal Audit Office. It's kind of like the arm of the enforcement arm, or whatever, the investigation arm of that committee. And so as much as possible, you know, we don't control the legislature in terms of asking them to do another audit. And there have been repeated management audits done by the state auditor's office. There's a bill now that's pending that is calling for the state auditor to do a forensic audit. We are asking for a financial management audit, that is, the use of fiscal resources to accomplish management goals and objectives. It's a very different purpose. And this is what the Independent Audit Committee was really formed to do and to carry out, within the wisdom of the legislature that formed it. So I think it's very appropriate that this particular resolution, its genesis come from and be handled by the Independent Audit Committee to accomplish its purpose. And this is how the resolution has been, taken that into account, and it's drafted in that manner. And, you know, whether the Independent Audit Committee requires external assistance and supplementation with regard to the specialized financial management audit skills, that's up to them. But again, I think that it's a good thing that we have this, quote, independent Subcommittee that is supposed to be looking very objectively at our functioning and our oversight over the management of the mountain. And it is timely and appropriate at this juncture, with all the bills pending before the legislature, dealing with Mauna Kea and its attempt to audit us, that we address our own selves, that we take the initiative on our own, to do our own work with regard to understanding what's going on up there, to make, to start the process of making improvements and moving forward on this. So anyway, I just wanted to clarify what the Independent Audit Committee was all about.
Thank you.
That's what caused me to raise this initially. It does not read as a resolution where this would be something for internal purposes. Frankly, it reads as something that if it comes out positively, it will be a press release shortly thereafter. And I think it's a little different, frankly, than what the Independent Audit Committee does, because we look at internal affairs. Parking revenues, for example, I'm just using it, or cellphone use. Mauna Kea is not that. And so I read the resolution as being directed, yes, perhaps, and rightfully so, to if things are found that need to be modified or changed, that internally they'll be done, but frankly, I read it as a response to the external audience. And that is my concern about having it done in a way that people will discount the findings if they don't agree on the basis that it was, quote, an inside job. And I think, as someone who uses athletic analysis many times, you will see what's happening around the country, for example, and in employment examples these days, in major companies and major universities, where they are farming out investigations of employer misconduct to external organizations, whether it's law firms or otherwise. And I think if we internalize this resolution to say it's directed internally so that we can improve our own policies and procedures, I think it's great. But if it's designed, at least in part, for an external audience, I want the audience not to be able to challenge the results on the basis of bias. So that's why I raised it in the first instance.
Regent Higaki?
Last time, I promise. In respect to both Regent Kudo and President Lasner, I totally understand now what the purpose is, and I think most of the people in this room understands that. And so with that, I agree to, and I'll support this. I just, you know, understanding the discussions we've had here would be remiss that without this discussion, others might understand it differently.
So just to clarify a couple of things. One, you know, as I said, I have no problem with the internal audit, and the fact that I never said that the President should direct, I said he can request. And obviously, the administration and the audit committee have worked hand-in-hand in terms of getting that done. So if it's for internal evaluation and introspection and guidance, I think, you know, we don't need a resolution for that. But the whole idea of this resolution, I mean, it's difficult to ignore national coverage, the number of hearings we've had in Hilo, the international aspects of this to treat this resolution as purely an internal kind of way to improve what we're doing. I mean, that has actually an effect beyond simply the audit committee. With all due respect to the audit committee, I'm not trying to detract from their role. So I agree with the President that a third audit entity might not be as well-versed in terms of the university, but I guess my preference has that contingency that the person or the office probably best able to give an objective view that would be, I think, acceptable to most people and to the Board, would be the state auditor, as I said, who has had history and experience in auditing this program.
My own interpretation of this is that we are trying to provide something in a timely way. The state auditor's office is perfectly capable of doing a very thorough audit, but the timeliness of what they are able to do is just a function of how they have to operate. So you notice the timetable that we put in here is quite aggressive for an audit that was intentional, and it was to try to get something done sooner rather than later. That's one thing for you to consider. The second is, I think this is a measure requesting transparency, transparency in understanding money and how it's being managed. And that transparency is for the benefit of the Board, the administration, and the public. I think it would benefit everybody, because at this point, as President mentioned, it's a very complicated... a very complicated matter and I don't think any of us have a very good handle on it. So that can only, to me, help us in how we are evaluating and looking at all things Mauna Kea. So I do support this resolution and I think it's a good discussion. I understand we have different opinions on it, but been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Call for abstentions.
Two abstentions?
Yeah.
All right, and I vote aye. Thank you. The motion is carried. Members, what is your preference? Do you want a break for lunch or do you want to try to plow through item B, which is information and discussion on Mauna Kea?
And I think he, what he shared with you today reflects something that he feels very, very deeply about. So I want to commend you, Merrifor, for that work that you're trying to pursue. First item is the infrastructure improvements in the Mauna Kea visitor information station. One of the major issues we face in managing Mauna Kea is increased traffic due to the interest and accessibility with the improvements in the saddle road. That combined with the fact that, as you see from the image, even at the visitor center, stargazing is an amazing, amazing experience that unlike any place else in the world that Mauna Kea offers. It attracts a lot of people. There are planned stargazing activities for nights a week. On average, it's seasonal, it varies, but we can have on average between 275 and 300 visitors per night. We currently have a parking vehicle limit of about 115 vehicles, but that sort of depends on how people are parked and whatnot. And it does have, present, managing the parking at the visitor information station does present some real safety challenges, if you will. So in compliance with the comprehensive management plan to consolidate and better manage parking, we're pursuing, and this is just a image of how parking can start to get out of control up there. We are pursuing some improvements, or the Office of Mauna Kea Management is pursuing some improvements to, to the parking situation. It's just an overview of the parking plan. The proposed action will include the removal of one of those longhouses there that you see where the new parking lot would go, a new means of ingress and egress for visitors, for vehicles, excuse me, new access lanes, paving of walkways and things like that. While the estimates are merely that because it sort of depends on how people park and whatnot, we expect to go from about 115 parking spaces to about 180. The timeline on that is that in March of 2017, a draft environmental assessment was completed by the Office of Mauna Kea Management. Finding of no significant impact was filed in August of 2017. The Conservation District used application was actually filed in November. And Office of Mauna Kea Management, well, actually, the Board of Land, Department of Land and Natural Resources will be holding a public hearing on the proposed improvements, next week actually, here in Hilo. Should note that the hearing was not something that was necessarily required, but was requested that we do by the department. Department is actually running the hearing, we are just, or Office of Mauna Kea Management is just facilitating it. So that's that matter. On the matter of new land authorization, i.e. in the past we referred to this as master Chapter 343, which requires environmental study, is triggered by this request that we want to pursue. And I'll give you a little bit of timeline on the next slide. Because this is a request that involves state lands, that involves a lease, involves permits, et cetera. And there are three alternatives being, that are included in the scope of the prep notice that we would like to explore. The three alternatives are no action alternative, which means the current master lease, which is a 65-year lease, expires in 2033. Now, it is essential that for the observatories as well as for the university, that we provide some stability and continuity in order to support ongoing maintenance and upgrades to keep the observatories as state of the art. And so obviously, the no action alternative would clearly mean probably a loss of observatory astronomy activities on the mountain. What that means then is that's why we're pursuing a new land authorization, either to a master lease or some other conveyance. So first alternative is a no action alternative. I'll talk a little bit more about that in the next couple of slides. The second alternative is a reduced area alternative. And then the third would be seeking new authorization for the existing area that we currently hold under the master lease. Under alternatives two and three, under the alternatives of a reduced area and an existing area, there are three options that we are asking the BLNR to consider. The BLNR is the one who would determine these. One would be a leasing option, a new master lease, 65 years. Second option would be an executive order transferring the lands to the University of Hawaii. And the third is kind of open because there are various other alternatives that could be possible that we want to see if come up, if they come up in the public comment period. So for example, as we've seen in Senate Bill 3090, some pretty definitive proposals about transferring lands and whatnot, or at least are in some people's minds. So we're just keeping that, that option open. So a little background on how we got to this point. December 2014, a new master lease prep notice was filed. There was a series of open houses held in Hilo, Waimea, and Honolulu in February 2015. And then in May of 2015, Governor Ege issued his new policy framework, otherwise known as the 10-point plan, that really asked us and asked everybody to sort of reconsider how we approach this issue. And so we've been working on that, somewhat delayed by the contested case and other things, but we've been working on that since then. And we were now at the point where tomorrow, the prep notice for this new authorization will be published. So a little bit about the alternatives themselves. This is the current leased area that the university has under master lease. Alternative one, our request for a new land authorization is denied. What that means is that the existing master lease expires and all facilities are decommissioned per the terms of the master lease. There's subleases and/or the comprehensive management plan no later than December 31, 2033. So that would be alternative one. Alternative two seeks a new land authorization for a reduced area, primarily the astronomy precinct at the summit, along with the mid-level facilities at Halepohaku and the road that connects the two sites. In all, this would be approximately 640 acres comprised of some separate parcels, 550 acres at the summit, 71 acres approximately of the roadway, and 20 acres at Halepohaku. This would represent 6% or actually little less than 6% of the current leased area. And the remaining 10,738 acres would be returned to DLNR, which is consistent with the governor's 10-point plan. So this alternative is clearly aligned with what the governor had proposed in his new policy framework. For alternative three, we would be seeking a new land authorization for the existing leased area, the 11,288 acres that comprise, currently comprises the Mauna Kea science reserve, the 71-acre roadway, and the 20-acre Halepohaku. Again, either under master lease, executive order, or some other transfer. You may have seen in the news that two unpermitted operators were issued fines for their activities. And that effort really came about because of the close collaboration between our rangers, our Mauna Kea Support Services staff, and the Dokeha and DLNR personnel. Without that collaboration, wouldn't have happened, but we hope to be able to sort of address all of this stuff through these rules. It is projected that that whole process for the environmental assessment, permitting for the actual decommissioning, removal of the structure, and restoration of the site will take three to four years. So these, these things are not, these kinds of activities are not easily accomplished. They have to be planned for years and years ahead of time. The second telescope is Hoku Kea. The university filed their notice of intent to decommission that telescope in November, I mean September 2015. Conservation District used application for the removal of that structure still needs to be filed, but the process of removing the internal mechanical and metal infrastructure has begun for which no permits are needed. So RFQ has been issued for removing the telescope and is estimated that in March of 2018, that will be completed or at least started, I think. And that concludes our update.
As I had gone through on the first meeting, the legislative update, there's about four measures related to Mauna Kea in the legislature. We are all, we're tracking all of them. There's been a number of people that have been referencing them all morning, so this shouldn't really be new. But just to give you some insight, the one that's come up most, you probably read a lot about it in coverage in the media, is a Senate bill introduced only on the Senate side related to the creation of a new authority to manage or govern the oversight of Mauna Kea. The bill is still alive, it is pending Senate Ways and Means Hearing. We do expect, actually I believe it's already been scheduled for tomorrow. Expectations is that this bill will likely pass the Senate and move over to the House. There is no House version counterpart to speak of. There's also a fair number of bills regarding audits or requesting audits to be done. University has testified on the bills that have been heard already regarding requests for a legislative auditor to conduct audits, forensic audits. I actually don't get the sense that people, legislators included, actually understand what a forensic audit is in the bills. So much of the amendments have been to try and move away from a forensic audit into more of a financial management audit piece. University has taken positions on it. We've actually offered that the Board of Regents had calendared or agendaed a resolution for the university internal auditor to take up an audit and that it, that could be worked into concert and a better use of overall taxpayer money to coordinate, because these audits are not inexpensive, they're actually rather expensive, even if the legislative auditor had to undertake them. So that's been the university's position. There has been a concurrent, Senate concurrent resolution that has spun out from these bills that would be required to compel the legislative auditor to undertake audit and audit of Mauna Kea. So those are the ones that are, that are moving. We do expect them to get some traction in the Senate and they will likely move over to the House. And again, this is the calendar, I did show it to you in the first time around. We do have a deadline coming up next week, so we do expect whatever bills that don't get heard by the end of this week, we do expect that they will be a push for any advocates to get them scheduled by next week. And university is watching all of the bills, including these bills related to Mauna Kea. That concludes the presentation. Madam Chair?